Good evening. I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Mr. Rodriguez, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no doubt, and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchak.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Long is not with us. Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Dysart?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Votchak. Okay, our first item on the agenda tonight are the presentations, and tonight we are so happy to acknowledge and to announce our Academic Games National Team. And as you can see, we have a lot of thinkers here that our students have won at national academic games. Thank you, gentlemen, too, for your help tonight. Those are very heavy. And with us, Ms. Lametta, would you please give us all the information about these wonderful awards? Thank you.
Yes, good evening, and I have the pleasure tonight of presenting the national academic team members, their coaches, and all their awards. And as I said last time, when I came in April, you all know, the students competed in Orlando in April with over 2,000 students in five days of competition. And in each division, there are sometimes upwards of 200 students and 40 teams. And I said this in the last meeting, I never know what they're going to bring back, but many teams and individuals come back with nothing, because with 200 individuals and 40 teams competing with places up through fifth place, many teams come back with nothing, and they spoil us. And every year, they've been coming back with two carts full of awards. So this is not typical. It's typical for these guys, but it's not typical for every team. They do a tremendous job. All that studying and hard work that they did really paid off, and the teamwork and camaraderie they have. You know, I mentioned last time what great students these were. The adults who went on the trip came back and said, "Ms. Lametta, these kids were wonderful." It's five days of intense competition. They're not in their own bed. They're not getting their own food. They don't have the comforts of home. It's a lot of pressure, and they were such wonderful students, working with each other, teamwork. I mean, just a pleasure to be around in some really tough situations, circumstances. So I would again like to applaud the parents for this, because I know this doesn't happen by accident.
Ms. Lametta, if we could have all the parents of the students, please stand and be recognized, please.
Now, I mentioned, they have tremendous awards. We came back with three national championships and two national runners-up. So that's incredible in and of itself. And just to give you a little bit of context, they typically give up to fifth place in thinkers, and then based on the number of students in each division, the students will get a medal if they place sometimes in the top 20 or the top 10. So you'll see some students walk through with medals. That means they had some places individually. In addition to, some of the thinkers are for the students themselves. So it's just been a tremendous team effort, individual effort, and I just can't say enough about the group of students and coaches we have, you know, working with us. I want to also just give one more bit of thanks to Chelmat Refining. They did give a generous donation. They've done this over several years, and that generous donation really helps the students and parents to fray the cost of going, and allows the students to really focus on studying, practicing, and not having to spend a lot of time fundraising. So I can't thank them enough for all they do to help contribute to this Academic Games competition. Okay, so to give you a little bit of context, as I introduce each coach and each student, they'll come around and shake the board member's hands and get their proclamation from Ms. Dysart. They have some team awards, and then they have their individual medals. So what I'll do is I'll introduce each coach, I'll introduce what the team won, and when I get to individuals, if they won something individually, I'll also add in their individual award as I introduce them, just to kind of give you all an idea. Okay? So, without further ado, I would like to start with the middle division team. And it's, Lori Gilchrist is the coach for the middle division. The middle division team were national champions. Oh, it's too close? So middle division had a national champion individual award in propaganda, a third-place team award in propaganda, fifth-place sweeps team award, and seventh-place propaganda individual award. And sweeps is the higher you place in each games, they add the four games up, and that's the higher you place in sweeps. So when we have individuals and teams that place in sweeps, that means they did so well into the games, they rose to the top amongst all the players in all four games combined. So middle division team members, we have Abigail Creason. William Scully. Chelsea Neder. Now, in addition to the team awards, Chelsea also placed 12th in propaganda individual. And remember, these games have 150 to 200 students in each game, so that's an amazing place. Jenna Jamore. In addition to the team awards, Jenna placed 7th in propaganda individually. And finally, we have our national champion individual for propaganda, Connor Dewey. Next, we have the elementary team. The elementary team was national champion in propaganda as a team, national runner-up in president's individual, third-place propaganda individual, fifth-place propaganda individual, seventh-place propaganda individual, and eighth-place propaganda individual. And we have elementary team coach, Ms. Melinda Hall. And now the elementary team members, Carter Mitchell. Arabella Alfonso. In addition to the team awards, Arabella placed 7th place in propaganda individual. Bryce Watson. In addition to the team awards, Bryce placed 5th place in propaganda as an individual. Ian Seibel. In addition to the team awards, Ian placed 3rd place individual propaganda. And I do want to recognize the final elementary team member. He couldn't be with us tonight, he's ill. Jack McMullin was national runner-up in president's individual and 8th place individual in propaganda. In addition to the team awards, he was also 9th place sweeps individual and 15th place onset's individual. He couldn't be with us tonight because he's ill, but I did want to recognize him. And now for the high school teams. We have a junior division team and then two senior division teams for high school. I'm going to start with the high school coaches, but I want to announce the awards first, so don't walk up just yet. We have quite a list. So for the high school teams, we, they are national champions in the president's team award, national runner-up equations team award, 3rd place onset's team award, 3rd place president's team award, 4th place sweeps team award, 4th place onset's individual award, 5th place propaganda team award, 5th place president's individual award, 5th place sweeps team award, 7th place propaganda individual, and 7th place president's individual. Amazing. So first, we have Coach Jonathan Palazzola. And Coach Abby Schilling. And Coach Ariana Kassar Cruz. And we have the junior division team for high school. The junior division team was 3rd place in onset's team, 3rd place in president's team, 5th place propaganda team, and 5th place sweeps award. Our first member is Kevin Rousseau. And next, we have Christian Thomas. In addition to the team awards, I mentioned, Christian placed 20th in onset's individual. Christian Miller. In addition to the team awards, Christian placed 4th individually in onset's and 18th place individually in presidents. Kimberly Quintanilla. In addition to the team awards, Kimberly placed 4th place onset's individual, 7th place propaganda individual, 19th place president's individual, and 20th place sweeps individual. And final member of the junior division team, Trey Myers. In addition to the team awards, Trey placed 7th place individual in onset's, 11th place individual in presidents, 15th place individual in equations, 16th place sweeps individual, and 19th place propaganda individual. And now for the senior division team with 10th place in sweeps, we have Michaela Mahirane. I did want to recognize Michaela. She could not be with us tonight, but I did want to recognize her. Also, Najia Kala could not be with us, but I did want to recognize her as well as a member of the high school team. And Reya Espirtu as well couldn't be with us, but she's also on the high school team. Next, we have on the high school team Haley Delmato. And next on the high school team, Elmi Gonzalez. In addition to the team award, Elmi was 13th place individual in propaganda. We have our final high school team, amazing results, national champions in presidents as a team, national runner-up in equations as a team, 4th place sweeps as a team, and they have a 7th place president's individual award. And our first member is Tanaya White, and she's the 7th place individual. Tanaya was the 7th place president's individual for the high school team. And next, we have Kenny Quah. In addition to the team awards, Kenny was 14th place in the presidents as an individual and 17th place in sweeps as an individual. Next, we have Ava Volante. In addition to the team awards, Ava placed 5th individually in presidents, 17th place individual in equations, and 20th place sweeps individual. Next, we have Selena Lee. In addition to the team awards, Selena placed 7th individual for equations, 12th place individual for propaganda, and 19th place sweeps individual. Next, we have Kobe Barrow. In addition to the team awards, Kobe placed 11th individually for onset's, 11th individually for presidents, 15th place individual for sweeps, and 17th place equations as an individual. And of course, all this hard work also is involved in local tournaments, the local coaches they had at the schools. I also want to give them a shout-out today, because they work with the students all year, getting them ready for nationals as well, and to our national coaches. And I'd like to do our next proclamation to Ms. Gina Azavado. She's our local and national tournament coordinator, and I know she's retiring soon, so I'm going to try not to cry as I stand up here. So I don't know what we're going to do without her, but we have some phenomenal people in our system, so I know we will find someone to help, but of course, there's only one Gina Azavado, so. And our final proclamation. Sorry, our final proclamation's going to go to Ryan Gregoire. As we mentioned in April, he's been with us since 3rd grade. He's off in his law career as well. He comes every year and works with our students, and we don't want to do without him as well. So thank you, Ryan. That's it.
And also, I think we have to recognize Mary Lumetta, who really has taken, for many, many, many years, a leadership role for academic games within our school system, without whom none of this would be possible. So thank you, Ms. Lametta.
It's a privilege to get to work with these individuals and these coaches, I have to say, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lametta. On behalf of the entire board, we want to congratulate all of our students who have done so well nationally with academic games. You have made us so proud, and thank you for representing St. Bernard Parish so well. We have some bright minds here, y'all. Wonderful job, students, to the parents, congratulations, and thank you for your fine work at home with your children. And to all of our coaches, thank you. As Ms. Lametta said, it wouldn't be possible without all of you, and many of you have been with us many, many years, and I think Mr. Palazzola was one of our former players. And yeah, so we thank you for all that you do to help our students achieve the very, very best. So congratulations on behalf of the entire board. And at this time, we would like to take a picture, and Ms. Votchak, thank you also. And we know that you've always been a proponent and a strong supporter of academic games, as well as all of us, and so we thank you for all that you do at the helm. So congratulations again, students. Again, you make us so proud, and we're very happy that you've achieved so much. I mean, this is a national, y'all, national champion, so congratulations to all of y'all.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'd like to take a picture of the students, so we're going to take a short recess and take pictures. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. Again, we're so very proud of our national academic game winners. Thank you, and thanks, y'all, for all coming tonight. We appreciate it, students and parents, and of course, all of our sponsors, too, and our team coaches who do a great job. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the state elementary student of the year, and we are so proud to announce that Jack McMullin is the state winner of student of the year for the state of Louisiana, and he is, of course, a student of St. Bernard Parish. We're so, so happy for Jack and proud of him and his parents, and we want to congratulate him, but unfortunately, unfortunately, he's ill tonight. So we are going to put Jack on the agenda for another meeting and so we can recognize him as a board, okay? But congratulations, Jack, and to the entire family. Very, very proud of you. Okay. Next item is a 4-H update, and tonight, we're happy to have with us Mr. Wayne Burgess. Good evening, Wayne.
Thank you very much. It's been a while since we saw you guys, actually, so we wanted to come in. I have a new coworker, okay? So I wanted Gabby to come and introduce her to y'all tonight.
Hi, guys. My name is Gabrielle Gara. I am a former first-grade teacher here in our school system. I taught at Chelmat Elementary for six years. I have been a lifelong 4-H member. Mr. Wayne and Ms. Lauren, his former coworker, were my 4-H agents from 4th through 12th grade, and when they called me to let me know of this position, I couldn't wait to come in. It's been great. I get to share this with my daughter and all of my students from 1st grade. They're coming up into the club with me, and it's been a great experience so far. I'm very happy to be here.
And we're glad to have her. She's doing a real good job. I mean, so many of these kids, we've known since, you know, like you guys, known them since they were 4th grade, or maybe even beyond that. But she's doing a real good job. We're glad to have her, and you know, one of these days, I'm going to be walking out the door, and I like the fact that I got somebody that I can turn it over to and say, "Have at it." So, but what we wanted to do tonight, besides introducing her, and I guess y'all knew that Lauren had taken that new position. Lauren's still in our organization, but now she's my supervisor. So she went from being my coworker to my supervisor, so it just means, I just go to show you, don't burn your bridges. But anyway, all I had was a little one-page, two-page handout for you, and that's just to give you an idea of what we're doing with the 4-H kids during the course of the year. Right now, we're at the end of the school year. We have our environmental camp coming up. I have a camp called Marsh Dogs, where actually, one of the recipients, she'll be going to it. And it's for high school kids, and it's an environmental camp to try to teach kids where they live, because whether y'all know it or not, in St. Bernard, a lot of people have never been past Mero. So if you've never, if you don't hunt, you don't fish, you don't have relatives, you don't go down the road. And it's important for them to know where they live, and important for them to know what the coastal issues that face St. Bernard Parish are. And that's part of what we try to do, as well as to try to give them a good background information on the commercial fishing industry in our area. Matter of fact, I saw Debbie over there. Her daughter Dominique, you know, is my fisheries agent. So I got two 4-H kids that's working with me now, and it's kind of nice. You've got to be somewhere long enough for that to happen, and I'm enjoying that. But she does a real good job as well. She helps pull this camp together, and she does the majority of the teaching when it comes to things like the shrimp, finfish, oysters, everything that's related to the commercial fishermen. So we're glad to have her. But we have that coming up. We have camp in about three weeks. We have 4-H camp with the 4th, 5th, and 6th graders in about three weeks. Then we got a week off, then we got 4-H University. Then we got 4-H University, which is our high school kids over on the LSU campus. And some of those kids will compete in contests, and some of them will do what they call a track system. And then a week after that is horse shows, and a week after that, there's something else, and I can't remember. But anyway, I just wanted to let y'all see, this is kind of what we do during the course of the year. That's the number of clubs we have, and those are the kinds of activities that we try to do with the kids. So we stay pretty busy all year long. But I do want to say I appreciate y'all's support, because we can't do this without you guys. And just want to say thanks. And really, the main thing I wanted to do tonight was just get y'all to see Gabby. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. If not, we'll get out your hair.
Are there any questions tonight? Okay, well, Ms. Burgess, I just want to say thank you for all that you do also. I know you've been with the 4-H program for many, many years, and you've done a wonderful job, and we appreciate all that you have done. And you've been very focused on the activities, and I can see it's grown continuously throughout the years. And so we want to thank you. And it's great to meet your new assistant, Gabriella. Welcome, and we appreciate you bringing here tonight. And Ms. Seibert, we appreciate all that you do also. Who did you say the recipient was for the environmental camp? It's one of our local students?
Selena. Yeah, she'll be going to the camp.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great. And then the 4-H camp, is it still held in Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's a week long, right?
Actually, this year, it's four days. We come back on Thursday. You know, when the storms came through, the storms that hit was a Delta and I can't think, Laura. They tracked up north, too. So they did a lot of damage to 4-H camp. So last year, we were on the same type of schedule because they had buildings that hadn't even been rebuilt back yet. This year, we're on a four-day schedule because they're still having, they got pretty much everything built back except the cafeteria, and they're having to outsource the food. So it was just that much more expensive to go another day. So that's why we're coming back a day early this year. Hopefully, by next year, we'll be back on track. And it'll be Monday to Friday.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again, and 4-H is a wonderful program. And, you know, the camp is great. All of these programs are just enrichment, but it's just more opportunities for our students to appreciate so many other outside activities.
Well, I appreciate that. We try.
We do appreciate it. Thank you for all you do.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks again.
All right, well, thank y'all for having us tonight.
Okay, next item is an education committee item. Mrs. White.
Hello. So I'm here today to present on our third and fourth-grade literacy screener data. According to Bulletin 1566, students who are not proficient on the third and fourth-grade literacy screener are required to attend literacy instruction of 30 hours during the summertime. It's part of our summer learning program. And we now have, we screened all of our third and fourth-grade students in April, so we now have our results. We looked at the data to see where our students, how they performed. Just some clarification. Our literacy screener is a screener. So it is based on a specific reading skill. And for our third and fourth graders, that is reading comprehension. We use the DIBELS 8th Assessment, which is a LDOE-approved screener for our students. And it just does a little temperature check to see how the kids comprehend when they're reading a passage, okay? So to look at our results today, for our third graders, out of 529 third-grade students who were screened, 402 were proficient. So 127 of the 529 students scored non-proficient, which is approximately 24%. Of those 127 students, 78 of the students are diverse learners, meaning that 38 of the 127 are special education students, and 40 of our third-grade students out of the 127 are English language learners. 49 of the 127 non-proficient students are regular education students. So that is our third grade is how they performed. Our fourth graders, we had 582 fourth-grade students who were screened using the DIBELS 8th screener. And of the 582 fourth-grade students, 411 were proficient. 171 of the 582 fourth-grade students were non-proficient, which is approximately 29%. 87 of our 171 non-proficient students are diverse learners. 45 are special education students, and 42 of the 171 are English language learners. 84 of the 171 non-proficient students are regular education students. So that's where we fared for our third and fourth-grade students. Those students, according to Bulletin 1566, will attend our two-week summer learning program, which that part of our program is based on literacy instruction. So during that time, we will use the LDOE FIRE lessons, which are intervention lessons, and also their LIFT lessons. And our focus will be on those foundational skills. All of our students who attend for the two weeks, we always screen with a core phonics screener to see where their deficits are and to really pinpoint and focus on that instruction during those literacy instruction hours.
I have some questions. Thank you. I have some questions about those who that have to go to summer school. So I know we were gearing the summer school for the first two weeks of the summer, correct? And then an alternate two weeks in case some of them had vacation plans or whatever?
So our third and fourth grade-
So can you explain that, please?
Sure. Our third and fourth-grade students, we have two two-week sessions. So for example, if a parent, you know, already has a vacation plan for the first session, the student will attend in the second session. And all of our administrators have already met with the parents of the students who will be attending to determine which session they will go to.
And at the end of that session, will the students then be reassessed?
Yes, ma'am. So they will be reassessed using the same screening instrument, which is the maze that we used in April. So we can see growth in how, you know, how they're performing at the end of the session.
And then, of course, we're looking for those students to be successful after the remediation. But what happens to those students that or not?
So our students who are not, many of them are already on a literacy intervention plan or what we call literacy improvement intervention plan. They also, any students who may have not met their target will also be placed on that plan at the beginning of the year, where our teachers meet with our parents three times a year, talk about what interventions they're doing in the classroom, also give the parents activities and strategies to use at home to help support the teachers as they're intervening with the students.
Okay, well, those students will be, they'll be reassessed, of course, as you said, but then the following year. Will the tutoring services also be available to them during the school day as they have?
Yes, ma'am. So we have interventionists that will focus on those deficits. And also, we do have, if our students are not proficient in some of the grades, we offer our Steve Carter Literacy Tutoring. That is through the State Department. We also have our real-time tutoring that also focuses on specific literacy skills.
Okay, and the tutoring will take place during the day and then also after school, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So our interventionists are in school during the school day, and our tutoring initiatives through the LDOE are after school.
Thank you very much-
You're welcome.
-for that explanation.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Sean?
No, this was, I'm sorry, Mrs. White.
Okay.
How many students in the summer are in a room when they're working with the teachers? Is it a small group setting?
Yes, so it is. So on average, we have approximately between eight and 10 students in a classroom, which of course is of great advantage to the students because it's not 20 in a class. So they really are getting that small group of instruction, even though it's a whole group of eight students.
And have we been able to identify team members to support this particular portion of summer school? We're already staffed.
We're already set with our teachers and our paraprofessionals that also assist with our, you know, our teachers during instruction.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
I have a question.
Sean?
Dr. Salt, are you going to follow back up with us after the summer program?
Absolutely.
And give us some numbers on?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We move on to 3.2, Annual Review of Guide to Student Conduct. Hello?
Good evening, folks. Let me make sure that we've got our PowerPoint ready to go. We're looking at 3.2 within your folders. And Jack, you let me know what you need from me to get the PowerPoint up. Beautiful. All right, folks. Good evening. My name is Alex Schneider. I'm going to be walking you through the committee recommendations for provisions to the Guide to Student Conduct for the 2023-2024 school year. So back last month, and I know we spoke to you about this when we did our school safety review with you all. We did have our Guide to Student Conduct Committee meeting. These were the participants. It was a good combination of both central office staff, school administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, and parents. And so we were able to get a good group of people, all having kind of a different perspective on things that they would like to see changed. And in particular, tonight, I'm going to be presenting the changes that will be happening within our behavior conduct portion of the Guide to Student Conduct. So as you all remember, last year, we moved to a more comprehensive student and family handbook. This handbook is quite extensive. It's what is in front of you guys for this current year. But we'll be particularly looking at the behavior component. So the proposed amendments for the 2023-2024 school year are found within your packet. Everything that has been changed is going to be highlighted, and anything redacted will be scratched out. So discipline matrix. We do have our discipline matrix set up into three categories. Class 1 behavioral infractions, class 2 behavioral infractions, and class 3. There was no recommendation for any changes within the class 1 infractions and interventions. We did have class 2 infractions and intervention changes that were recommended. And within those changes, what you will see is we had some changes which fall within the idea of separation of multiple infractions in one bullet or description. And that's really about being clear with both our students and our parents about what our expectations are and making sure that we say that as directly as possible. And so you'll see things like a hostile confrontation with physical contact separated from instigating or participating in a fight. Many times, those things are very similar, but there are occasions where students behave in such a way that might be one and not the other. Second one, which would be an example of this, is aggressive action, which may involve threats and/or unwanted physical conduct. And we separated that out from aggressive action resulting in a staff member being hit or threatened, including a situation where a staff intervenes in a fight or other disruptive activity, okay? So those were two separated out. That was already existing within one of our codes, but we took those two out. Unauthorized entering onto school property by an individual who has been given prior notice that entry onto or use of the property has been denied. We had a portion of that that talked about being requested to leave, and we separated those two. So reluctance or failure to leave school property following an administrator's request. So that's the first type of changes that were being recommended to the board for the class 2 infractions. There are more. Let's see. It looks like it is frozen. I'll have to bring it over here. Let's see if it works. Okay, so then there are new infractions that are being recommended to be considered for the class 2 matrix. The first, we have had a lot of feedback from our administrators that vaping, and you all know this to be true, has become a real area of concern. Previously, we were really addressing this concern within our tobacco code and policy within the discipline matrix. But we didn't really feel like that was as clear or as helpful for our students. And so we wanted to really state very clearly for students and parents our expectations around vaping and vaping products, which include the non-tobacco products, right? So the flavored water, whatever they might have in there. We're also going to very clearly state the possession or use of matches, lighters, and/or tobacco. Or drug paraphernalia is also going to fall within that class, too. And then one of the other things that just come in with technology is the use of smartwatches for texting, talking, or other communication without permission. And so those are some of the new infractions that are being proposed to our class 2 matrix. Class 3 infractions and interventions. Again, we're going to see the separation of multiple infractions in one bullet or description. This is going to be very similar to our class 2. As always, we do have some descriptors that fall within our class 2 and class 3, and we have given our administrators the discretion to determine, based on the circumstances of those events, which of the two it really falls within. So here, you'll see the same idea around aggressive action resulting in a staff member being hit is really named as a class 2 and a class 3. These are the revised or new infractions. So filing a false report against a student or adult verbally and/or in writing that is known to be untrue at the time submitted, or adult was added to that verbiage. Intentionally setting a fire and damage, destruction, or defacement of property belonging to the school or others. That third one was within our class 2 infraction matrix, but we needed it also replicated within our class 3. And so that gives you all just an understanding of where we are with the matrix itself and the recommendations for those components. We have two additional components that we really would like to be highlighted within our guide. And it's not that these weren't already spelled out within the matrix, but similar to bullying and sexual harassment, we would like to add additional emphasis to this within our Guide to Student Conduct. So the first is going to be threat of terrorism or violence. And this directly reflects the language in Act 716, which is within your packets. This really has to do with threats of violence through communication, whether oral, visual gestures are written, including but not limited to electronic, mail, letters, notes, social media posts, text messages, blogs, or posts on any social networking website of any crime of violence that would reasonably cause any student, employee, or guest to be in sustained fear for his safety, cause the evacuation of a building, lockdown, shelter in place, or cause other serious disruption to the operation of a school. It can also include any intent to kill, maim, or cause great bodily harm to a student, employee, or guest on school property or at any school function. And the consequences that would be correlating to that would be really what is dictated within that law. And that is, first and foremost, we as a school system will conduct an internal threat assessment using the protocols that have been put forth by the federal government and the state. If the threat is deemed to be credible, an immediate contact to the St. Bernard Sheriff's Department will happen, and the student will be removed from campus and will not be allowed to come back to campus without a mandatory evaluation from a medical professional. This would also be resulting in a recommendation for a suspension or a placement at the alternative campus. And the second one is improper use of any electronic telecommunication devices in a manner which causes a substantial disruption. And so there are two components to this. The first is the improper use of any type of electronic telecommunication device on or off campus in a manner which causes a substantial disruption to any facility or campus. And this is going to include, but is not limited to, the following: recording of arguments, fights, unauthorized recording of individuals. But then it also goes to reiterate this idea of using telecommunication- But then, it also goes to reiterate this idea of using telecommunications devices for these threats of terrorism. And so, those components are both within this definition. The consequence for this, in addition to a recommendation for a suspension or a placement at our alternative campus, is going to be a 90-day suspension of use of any telecommunications devices on school campuses, and that kind of spells that out there. But essentially, what we'd be looking at is not allowing for those students to have any sort of telecommunications device while on campus for 90 academic days, whether that happens at the beginning, middle, or end of the school year. And if you are a senior, you would be jeopardizing your ability to graduate, or not graduate, but walk in the ceremony. And the third final piece that we really wanted to highlight tonight is in correspondence with revised statutes 17416.3, which is going to be around searches. And in particular, we will be adding language to really highlight for our families and for our students that canines, which we've discussed when we discuss school safety, may be used at random throughout the school year and without warning, and the use of metal detectors. So, random searches with a metal detector of students or their personal effects may be conducted at any time, provided they are conducted without deliberate touching of the student. And so, that really concludes the recommendations from our team and our committee regarding the Guide to Student Conduct that we are bringing to the board.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Millie?
Superintendent, would there be any chance for us to consider moving the vaping and the tobacco over to a class three? And I realize that that may sound intense to some individuals, but I recognize, and I know that all of you do as well, the health issues that these present to young people. It's illegal for them to possess them. It's illegal for anyone to have them on a school property. And I know in my own struggles with my own students, they don't understand the damage that this is doing to their body, and we know that it's a way for them to easily have marijuana on campus or another drug on campus. And it's one of those things that I'm individually super passionate about because it is so damaging to young people, and they just don't get it. And I don't know if it's something that we could consider a major infraction so that they understand that this is something that we take seriously, and we're doing that because we care about you. Like, it is, to me, it's one of those things that needs to be taken seriously.
I think you're right. It needs to be in both class two and three, because when we're talking about the vaping, if it has a drug in it, then that is an automatic class three violation. So, this clarification in class two was for a non-drug product, and I hate to say tobacco's a non-drug, but tobacco versus a stronger drug. So, we're going to, we can go ahead and add that in both the class two and class three, and then the school administrator would then make that decision if it actually, you know, has marijuana in it versus not. So, we can go ahead and add that one into class three as well.
I really appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Diana?
If you would, please, Ms. Schneider, could you, for the public's opportunity, could you delineate between the class one, two, and three, and the interventions and the infractions?
Sure.
That would take place upon each of them, so that everyone can understand the severity of the three, the one versus two versus three, please?
Yeah. So, a class one infraction is typically going to be seen as a more minor infraction that's usually observed within the classroom. It's going to be something that isn't overtly disruptive, and it would result in things like a detention, or, you know, a phone call home, a timeout, a written assignment, parent phone call, parent conference, things of that nature. So, these are more behaviors that we do not wish our students to be enacting in, and we're hoping through intervention can kind of get them back on the right track. And so, that's what you're going to see within the class ones. Class twos are going to be more severe, and these typically result in anything ranging from an after-school detention to a Saturday detention, all the way through a suspension. And so, that is really what delineates a class two, and the administrator has discretion on how, you know, what the consequence for that would be, in addition to any of the consequences that you observed within the class one. Class threes are going to be typically an alternative placement recommendation. And so, those things are, you know, items in which we hold to be of the most severity. They have made substantial disruption to the school campus or the educational environment of the student's peers, and we would be recommending a move to an alternative placement.
Thank you. And if you would, could you share with us who was on the committee for the review?
Yep. Jack, you want to go back to the PowerPoint real quick? And myself, Andrea Luchardi was on it from central office. We had the assistant principal from Chalmers High School, Will Schneider, Alicia Capstick from Tris, let me see if I can get it up, because I don't want to miss somebody. Ms. Woodward from Chalmers Elementary. It's of course going to freeze. Todd Larch from Andrew Jackson. We had Brooke Royce from Tris Middle School. We had... So, those are the folks that were there with us. So, we had about two from central office, one principal, two assistant principals, two parents, our union president, Maggie Rousell, also an instructional coach with our elementary schools, Jessica Janik, teacher at Chalmers High School, Brooke Royce Middle School, and Lauren Gonzalez is a paraeducator at Miro Elementary.
So, we had a broad spectrum of participators in the committee, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Teachers, parents, administrators?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean has a question?
Hey, Alex. The metal detection devices, will they be on all of our campuses, or is it high school and middle school?
What was that question? I'm sorry.
She mentioned the metal detector devices. Would they be on all of our campuses?
No, let me...
High school?
Let me wrap up, and then we can take public comment, and then y'all can discuss, okay? The, you know, I'm not going to go through all of the school safety practices that we did at the last meeting, when we talked about the additional mental health professionals that we are hiring, and the school safety educational programs that are from kindergarten through 12th grade that Mr. Kassar has gone over. We also have been in conversation, I have been in conversation for quite a period of time with Darlene Cusanza, with Crime Stoppers, and there is a school safety program that is statewide in partnership with the state police, local enforcement, and school systems that we will be implementing in this coming year with the Crime Stoppers. There'll be a district team comprised of the school administrator, a mental health professional, a law enforcement representative, who will either be an SRO or probably someone I'm going to introduce in just a minute to you. And it'll be a mechanism, I think many of you are familiar with Crime Stoppers for the general public. This is a special application for students. There will be, you know, training of the staff, our staff of administrators and teachers. There'll be an introduction to the students and an app for them. There'll be a letter, you know, to parents explaining with the situation what the application does. And it is a way, then, for any student who has any particular concerns and wishes to let people know, maybe through an anonymous way, that there is an issue that they feel that needs to be addressed, whether you're talking threats or violence, dating violence, weapons, cyberbullying, and even self-harm or potential suicide of a, maybe a, you know, another student that they've heard about. So, there'll be a way for them to go ahead and report that, which will come then jointly to the administrative team and the law enforcement to be investigated. So, I don't know how familiar you are with that particular program, but we intend to implement that, which would then allow any student on any of our campuses, if they feel there is a concern, that they can either go to the school administrator, or if they feel they need to do it through another mechanism, there'll be an app that they can go through. So, that's going to be, you know, something that we are implementing in this coming year. In conversation, you know, with Sheriff Pullman, where we've had extensive conversation over the years, and I don't know how, if y'all remember all this, what we used to have with the Sheriff's Department before they did some type of reorganization many years, a few years back, is a dedicated school, if you want to call them liaison officer, that was our go-to person instead of necessarily going a circuitous route with any kind of a report where you might get different deputies coming out or whatever, that we would have a centralized, or one person who will be assigned solely, a detective solely to the school system. And many years ago, we used to have that. So, he agreed to reinstitute it, and I want to, she's in the audience right now, and I'd like her to stand up for a minute. Many of you know her. It's Lieutenant Michelle Canepa, who is a lifelong resident of St. Bernard Parish, gone through our schools and such, worked years ago in the juvenile division when there was a separate juvenile division, and that's where she got her basic training. And the last few years, and I really don't know your total history, Lieutenant Canepa, I'm just going from memory, watching you go through all these different phases. And she has been a general detective in the Detective Bureau for the Sheriff's Office for many, many years. And most of the time, she's been our go-to person, because she used to be our go-to person, so we always would call her. So, what the sheriff has now done is assign permanently then Lieutenant Canepa as being our go-to person. I think that that is a better setup when we're, what we're talking about when our principals have an issue, our teachers, or we have an issue, that we have that direct line of communication. Now, we still have our school resource officers that are in place. We have our truancy officer that we have through the Sheriff's Department. We have the officer goes out and does the residence investigations for us and such, and the DARE officers who work primarily with the fifth-grade students, but then are on our campuses when those students, when those classes are not necessarily, you know, in session. So, that's, I think, going to be a better, I guess, organizational structure, you know, than we've had before. You've seen some of the changes, you know, in the discipline policy. What you also saw in the discipline policy is that we also used to have, and for those of you who've been around a long time, you know how you have the canines, you have the drug dogs and the ballistic dogs? I say ballistic dogs, dogs who search out ballistics as well as search out drugs. And we used to have that as a regular part of the rotation. For the last few years, it's been unavailable to us because of the scarcity of that resource. But in the conversations that I've had, we're going to be able to reinstitute that periodically. And that's why you see in the Guide to Student Conduct, that section in there that we have highlighted. It's always been in there. We used to do it. We'll be, you know, reinstituting that as well. And before I get into the metal detector things, I'm going to, you know, make mention of what did happen, you know, at Tris Middle School on Friday. And Ms. Colburn and Ms. Capstick are here in the audience, and I just want to applaud them for the way they handled the situation. They did a remarkable job, went through all the training that they've received, executed it perfectly, did the protocols that we had in place for a potential incident that would occur. A student, as everyone knows, said to a teacher that another student had a gun on campus. We immediately removed a student, his bookbag, contacted Sheriff's Department. Lieutenant Canepa was the first on the scene, as well as Major Bostick, immediately. At no time, and there's been a lot of miscommunication that's been going on out there that I don't know where it came from, to be honest. But as she can attest, as she's standing right here, there were no reports of any student pulling any gun and pointing it at anyone. That is completely, I guess, a misconception from many people out there. There's also a misconception where some people were saying that our school administrators impeded the investigation by the Sheriff's Department, which is a total falsehood. Is that correct, Lieutenant Canepa? As soon as they got on the scene, they immediately took control. The student was removed. And then, both of the detectives went ahead and began the investigation with the students, did the questioning, made the determination of what next steps would happen. So, I just want people to understand that within minutes, everything was neutralized. It was a very, it's a bad incident. You know, we're not saying that that did not occur. It did occur where a student did bring a gun to school. But much of what is being said out there is not an accurate account of what actually happened. And I have Lieutenant Canepa here, who led that investigation along with her supervisor, Major Bostick. So, they did a remarkable job. And in the midst of all that, Ms. Colburn was able to quickly get out a quick robo-call to parents, just letting them know what happened, and the staff, and email to the staff while she was in the midst of all this going on. Were able to come back with a little more clarity a little bit later to give a little bit more detail as to what actually occurred. Now, I know that there's been made some discussion out there about metal detectors and such. And the policy that we have, when you talk about metal detectives, detectors, there are walkthrough kinds. There are handheld metal wands, those types of things. There's been a lot of research done in the nation. If you go ahead and look at the research, I know we've had a discussion, Ms. Harris, we've had discussions, I've had discussions with many of you. If you do the research, there are very mixed feelings on walkthrough metal detectors and how effective they are, what the prevention is, and how realistic they are in any school situation. We have been told by the agencies, which are the, I guess, the people who help us develop the emergency response plans and such, that, I don't even know what term to use like that, but if you're going into a building that is totally secure, for example, if you go into a federal building, and the first thing that you do is you go through a metal detector, you take your belt off, or you go in the airport, take your belt off, take your shoes off, you put your belongings on the side to go through and for it to be scanned or screened. It, if you've got a totally enclosed setting, it can be very effective. In settings where you don't have a complete closed envelope, it can be a feel-good measure. It can stop a person maybe who is walking in with something, but as soon as they see it's there, they're probably not going to walk in with anything. In a school setting, you can go, as they tell us, put something over the fence. Somebody can pick up something in the yard once they've been into the facility. You can put stuff through windows once they get on the premises. And they have found that... And they have found that the amount of time it takes to go through, if you've got several hundred people going through, it is not necessarily a realistic or effective measure. The recommendation is more into, and we can have this discussion and have input as well, the recommendation is more to more of those, you know, the handheld metal wands where you do random or periodic screening, say for example, if kids are walking in, you may do a random type of screening for every, I don't know, 10th kid or every certain, you know, number, that it would not necessarily be proven, because you're going to be searching backpacks, talk about clear bags, that doesn't, I know, you're shaking your head, no, Ms. Harris, and you're right, you know, that doesn't necessarily, it's not a deterrent, you can have your sweatshirt in there, you can have a, you know, a piece of clothing, or you would have to go through everything that is in there anyway. Metal detectors, those walkthrough kinds unless they're very super sophisticated kind, and they are coming out with better and more improved ones that use infrared technology and such, that we are looking into right now, just to make sure that if there's anything out there that would effectively do it and be manageable to do it, that we want to definitely look into this. So what we are thinking in terms of doing in that is to equip, you know, all of our administrators with those that we're talking about, the, we have them at Raleigh, and to equip all of our school-based administrators. I've talked with every superintendent in the whole regional area. No one has the walkthroughs other than in Jefferson, some of the schools there, but in no other school system, I've talked to St. Tammany, Plaquemine, St. Charles. LaFouche told me they had put them in and they don't use them because it's too cumbersome and too many phones. It takes them, it would take them an hour and a half to get 1,400 kids through. And for the effectiveness of it, looking at the rest of the campus, they don't look at that as the most effective way. So they go to other prevention mechanisms and the random searches and the random wanding of the backpacks and such. So, you know, with, with that, I'm, you know, going to stop for a moment, and then, I mean, I would, if y'all want to take the public comment and then have the discussion or whichever way you wish to proceed, that'll be up to you.
Okay, we have public comment from Rob Larson.
My name is Robert Larson, and I have two smell Trojan at LaCosta Elementary. First, Member Warner, I'd like to answer the question you posed to the superintendent. She has no immediate plans of purchase nor implementation of metal detectors on our campuses. At our last meeting, almost two full hours were spent on discussing external security and tightening up the ship from the outside, and now she speaks of possible lax control on the outside again, saying internal measures aren't necessary. Continuing to my main point, on April 11th, Superintendent Doris Voce spoke before this board promising an increase in attendance scrutiny and DA involvement for our student population's attendance issues as part of a three-hour hastily conceived safety presentation for your benefit. However, we see in the newest revision of the 120-page Guide to Student Conduct, the complexity of attendance policy is mentioned only on two and a half pages. There are no explicit outlines of consequences for truant students, nor defined obligations of parents, the district, nor the courts. Specifically, the three, seven, and eight day milestones are only mentioned in one single sentence, together with the modifier "may" rather than "shall" being utilized, a very specific legal distinction. Internally tracked milestones such as 10-day and 14-days are specifically not mentioned in this text at all, and there is no mention of any actionable triggers for neither our parents nor students presented throughout each step in the process. No outlined definitions on the parent's side, the staff's side, nor the judicial side of the equation. There are only very basic languages for the five-day marker, which in its current form reads as more of an absolution of the district than an outline of defined procedure for students to understand and agree to. There is absolutely no language in the entire text mentioning truancy partnerships with SBSO, nor our DA, nor the courts, even though our superintendent has been very keen to speak about new intentions publicly to you all with this exact form less than one month ago. Most concerning of all, of the 120-page document, the Families in Need of Service Assistance Program enacted by Title VII of the Children's Code more than 20 years ago and still in effect today, is relegated to one single sentence in our 120-page guide and states the district may choose to utilize it rather than the legal weight of the term "shall." The FINS segment of the Louisiana Children's Code went into effect on July 1st, 1994, and introduced several formal court procedures as well as informal processes for court-appointed intake officers to assist in families with identified issues. At this time, FINS also facilitated implementation of family services plans between families and providers, such as yourselves here today. When implemented statewide more than 20 years ago, it was heralded as a unique opportunity for early judicial intervention and to aid in the prevention of delinquency and child abuse. Over the past 20-year period, St. Bernard Schools under Doris Voce as superintendent has never once complied with FINS regulations, nor provided adequate service provided by its language to our community families. Minimal research will uncover a multitude of public statements from the DA's office themselves in our public papers for years stating they have no referrals for our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have, is it Chad Merritt? Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I gotta say, y'all nip that in the butt a little bit there, the way that happened with the school, y'all coming up with, talking about the metal detectors, you know, the little hand devices, yeah, I'd love to see that. And I actually agree with you, metal detectors, walking through it, makes you feel like, you know, you know, it's safe, right, a low zone, right, you know, you want to make them happy as they're coming through school. So I agree with what you said there, Ms. Doris, about the, with the certificate, you know, scientific, determined, when checking out, making sure you went to handheld thing, that's great, yeah, I think that's really right. The, but another thing I hadn't seen, I missed on with Tris, you know, still, I'm with, we still need two high schools, right? I'm still going to hit y'all with that, and I ain't going to stop on that, right? Look at you, middle school numbers is coming out, look at you, senior numbers is coming out. You're going to get overpopulated, you already are overpopulated, you're overfire marshal. Anyways, I'll go to Tris. So, yeah, I'll do want to commend Ms. Colburn for saving my son and every other son and daughter that was in that school, and making sure that that gun got out of that school. I do appreciate that very much, and every other parent does as well. I do for my heart, especially being my old teacher, looking out for them, I do appreciate that. But still, again, that gun got on campus, right? That should not be allowed in this parish. Shouldn't be in any parish. Y'all need to come up with something better than what y'all got going on right now. You know, I had to do, I did have a good speech, but y'all threw that out the window, because y'all kind of nipped that in the butt a little bit, and I liked everything that y'all have said so far. As long as y'all stick to it, make it happen, right? I do want to bring up one thing, though, that I did see, that child did bring that gun on that campus, you know, and I've had, I've been having to drop my son off at school early in the morning, 7:38 a.m. in the morning, when the students get out of the cars in the line that we're dropping them off at Tris. There's no teacher there. They're going into a courtyard through a little three-foot fence, going into a courtyard with ample amount of students that's there. Had to be about, four times I brought my son, because I had to take up for my wife and all, no problem, whatever it takes, you know, family. And I've seen it, and so there was no teacher there, though, right? So if this student was, per se, any student that was coming out of a car into that courtyard where they had 60 kids in there, with no teacher there, he could have shot up 60 kids. Take that in mind. Security principals on these schools need to be very important, because when we drop our kids off, you're their mother now, you're their father now, you're supposed to protect them as I protect them, to raise them. So once they get in your hands, out of my car, and I watch them make sure to get into your hands, into your hands, as your child, it's not your student, it's your child, that's, I hope that's the way y'all looking at it, because that's the way it needs to be. Y'all need to make sure that our kids are safe getting into your hands. This whole getting on to a middle school with a gun, like, you know, I'm pretty sure everybody thought that was going to happen in Chalmers High, that's what I felt, that's what a lot of people thought. It happened in a middle school. That is crazy. Crazy. I don't even think it's ever happened in this parish on record. I just want to say, I appreciate everything that y'all said tonight. It made a lot of sense on everything y'all said and investigations y'all done on checking out with the statistics of everything you done, Ms. Doris, on with the metal detector with the hand rather than walking through, I do agree on that. Just make it happen. Make me feel like when I dropped my child off at your school, that he or she is safe in your hands, and you're protecting them as it is your own child. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, now we go to you, Diane.
He's still chattering with that. He's still chattering. I can't hear.
I think, I think.
Okay. Oh, you recognizing me? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. White.
Yeah, thank you on personal items.
Okay. I, I just want to say a couple of things, thank you for your input, and, you know, safety is our number one priority for our children, our grandchildren, and our faculty and staffs. And I've personally dropped off my grandchild at Tris, and I've seen Ms. Colburn and Ms. Capstick out there along with many teachers at each dropping point, I just want to clarify that, I've seen it, and I've appreciated that. And, but you're right, you have a lot of students in one area, and, you know, we definitely want to make sure that everybody is safe, but I think our administration at Tris has been, is doing a great job. And I want to thank the sheriff's office for working alongside of us and having Ms. Canepa be a part of our liaison, and we appreciate that and the job that was done. And you're right, Mr. Merritt, that was a terrible situation. It scared all of us, each and every one of us. And my grandchildren go, and my children went to, and I know many of the other board members have children, and they are all of our children. We didn't want to see any child ever, ever get hurt. You know, that should be our number one priority. And, but it starts with the parents. The parents have to be aware that their children and what they're doing and the behaviors at home, you know, the school system, this board, the administration, the teachers and staff, I think, are doing their very best to promote, to ensure safety in our schools. Trust me, any student involved in criminal activity and violent behavior will be expelled, period. Zero tolerance, zero. And I thank you, Ms. Schneider, for presenting the Guide to Student Conduct, and I want to thank all the committee members who put in a lot of time, and we appreciate the parents, the teachers, and the administrators for being on the committee. You know, there's a lot of things that we do need to worry about in this day and age, and so we appreciate that, and we try to cover everything, but we have zero tolerance for negative behavior at school, and we need to maintain that. And I think this board and the administration has proven that we are going to do that. You know, we have added mental health professionals, we've added resource officers, and we'll continue, and we're going to work closely with the sheriff's office to have canons go into schools. And, you know, and we can search students, and we can search lockers, you know, that's under the revised statutes. So we need to work with the sheriff's office, and we do, and our sheriff has been very cooperative, and we need to make sure that our judicial system is also tough on juveniles. You know, the district attorney's office, the district attorney's office, excuse me, you're out of order. You're out of order. You're not following the guidelines. So we all have to follow rules, and our district attorney's office needs to be tough on crime, not only adult crime, but on juvenile crime, and I think they're, they want to do that. And they're going to work closely with us, and we'll maintain that close relationship with the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office. We need our judges to be tough also, and, you know, to give consequences to the violent acts of all, so that we do live in a safe community, and that we can provide the very best education in our schools, and we could provide and ensure safety to our staffs and to our students. So, Ms. Voce, I want to thank you for working with each of us. We have also made suggestions to the superintendent, and she has gotten the resources and the information for us to make these positive moves for safety for all of our students and our staffs, and we'll continue to work toward that, to provide not only excellent education, but safety in our schools and in our community. So thank you sincerely for all of your efforts. We know, you know, again, we live in a day and time that we have to worry about this, and we appreciate the dare offices also for being in our schools. And I would just suggest, too, you know, we have, and I'm going to request that of the sheriff, we have offices, you know, doing duty in the streets, we want to invite them to stop at our schools and have more of a presence at our schools for the, to the students, to let them know that, you know, we're all on top of the safety.
I know, Ms. Dyes, I saw Ms. Jackson, we talked about that last year and invited them.
Yes.
And we want to reissue that invitation. When I met with Lieutenant Canepa and Major Bostick the other day, well, recently, you know, we re-extended that invitation, so they're going to get that word out, too, that drop by at lunch, sit with the kids, eat with the kids, well, pay for their lunch.
Right.
You know, and some, and our cafeteria ladies will be happy to have them, you know, in our cafeterias, so we welcome them into our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Voce. Again, this is a very serious matter, and we take it seriously, and we appreciate all the cooperation of, as I said, the sheriff's office, the DA's office, and the judicial system. Thank you. Thank you. Ms., I'm sorry, what was the last gentleman, the last, the name of the gentleman who just spoke? I know his name is Chad. Mr. Merritt. I know you mentioned that you didn't see any staff when you dropped your son off. Is Ms. Colburn still here?
Is Ms. Colburn?
Please get with Ms. Colburn so she can pinpoint where the person is on staff, so that you can feel more sure that when you drop your child off, there's an adult there to see him.
Ms. Colburn has my personal cell phone number, and I definitely talked to her a lot.
I just want to make sure because it was, yeah.
I appreciate you bringing that up and all, too, but I just thought that the person that was there, that was going to be a teacher, was sick, you know, and I didn't think, didn't think big about it. And I do respect y'all's comments back to me on that.
But it is big about it, it is a big thing, because you did make a comment that there were no.
I didn't even think that any of how the security issue was until after this came up, that the gun actually got on to the school premises, and I thought yesterday, I was like, wow, what could have happened if it was a kid that was in the drive through, you know, because the teacher wasn't there at that point, you know, I thought that they released him at 7:35.
Yes.
And it was 7:38, and I saw all the students started getting on the cars, and I was like, okay, well, you know, I guess if you go follow them, then there was no teacher there. And I just kind of thought that the teacher was sick, right, or the board, or whoever was supposed to be here at that moment was sick, you know, it was like, oh, kind of put two and two together, yes. Yes, so, Ms. Colburn, I know she will definitely take care of it, she's a very good principal and a very good teacher.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments, Millie?
Yeah, I'd like to say so. Maybe, Ms. Voce, you can talk to someone from the sheriff's office, and maybe one or two deputies could stop by at each school in the mornings, not, not long, hour and a half, whatever it takes for kids to get in and kids to be in the school, and maybe stop by in the evening. be in the school, and maybe stop by in the evening. And they'd have a little presence of the Sheriff's Office at each school.
You know, we're continuing to have discussions-
Yes, ma'am.
-in terms of patrolling and such, and, um, you know, the Sheriff's Department has been extremely cooperative with us, and, um, I'm sure we'll do whatever they can in that regard, Mr. Ibris.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Millie?
No.
Charlie?
I just have something very quick to say. As someone whose child was at Tris on Friday and also will be attending Chalmers High School next year, I just would like to say that I have full confidence when I drop my student off in the morning, that you guys are going to take care of her as if she were your own child. And I greatly appreciate everything that you guys do for us. Thank you.
Okay. Millie?
And so, Superintendent, I appreciate the conversation that you and I had, and it was very comforting to me to know that you were able to give all of the details, and, and I appreciate tonight that you have recognized the staff, because having been in a similar situation as an individual, it's good to know that you have support from this level and know that you have support from our level as well. And I would just ask, we have the intention of purchasing additional handhelds. When we present the budget in June, will you highlight that so that everyone in the audience can hear and see that we are investing those monies, that we are standing behind and making the commitment?
All right.
And I know that we're still waiting to hear back on the Safer Schools Grant, um, or whatever the name of that one is with the Department of Ed, and hopefully we'll get it so that we can do the additional features that we wanna have. But I think being able to show folks where we're putting the money and saying that, yep, we're doing this, it will help everybody understand that we are committed to making it safer. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Keith?
Um, another thing that was mentioned in public comment. I know, um, in the past, and I say past, like about maybe five or six years ago, um, Raleigh did have a relationship with FENS, Families in Needs of Service. Ms. Votche, do we still have that relationship with FENS?
Absolutely. We work very closely with FENS. They're on all our campuses. Um, that has been a very longstanding, um, relationship for years and years and years. So, yes, they're in and out of our schools. We communicate daily with FENS.
Provide data.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, back to you, Ms. Daisar.
Thank you, Ms. White. All right. Next item, or personnel changes for 2023. In your folder, you have the changes. Were there any questions at this time? There being none, there's no action to be taken. Next item is a review of the 2023-24 Personnel Evaluation Plan. And is Ms. Pritchard here tonight? Ms. Pritchard is ill tonight.
Oh.
She, um, had, so she wasn't able to come, but she sent this. Her steering committee, um, met. There are no changes to any of the local evaluations in the Personnel Evaluation Plan. The only, um, change, what you see in the plan on page seven, and this is really the state plan for evaluation. So, when you see it, it's, it's, um, exactly as bulletin 130 at the state level is. The piece that is local is in front that we add in addition to. But on page seven of the plan, um, highlighted is just the change that the state made in the, um, in their bulletin, and you see it highlighted that the evaluators will meet, um, with each evaluator to discuss the student learning target. So, that is the only change in the plan. Okay?
Okay.
So, we would need a motion for that if, yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor at this time? There's a motion by Mr. Warner, there's a second, a second by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion or any questions at this time? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is administration's request for permission to mail letters of assurance.
And again, this is just the standard, um, letter of assurance each year that we send to the substitutes within the system, telling them that we intend to reemploy them in that capacity for the following year. And that's a mandate by the state that we do so.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next item is an insurance committee item. Ms. Harris.
And before I bring that up, did we need to motion on 3.2?
We need to backtrack and vote on that.
To approve the changes. Did we need to motion to approve the changes on 3.2?
Right, that's what I, that's what I was just saying. I think we kinda skipped over that, so we need to backtrack.
I would like to motion on 3.2 to move favorably on the recommended changes.
Okay, we're going back to vote on 3.2. Ms. Harris makes a motion to approve all of the changes on the, changes on the student conduct?
Guess me.
There's a motion, and it's seconded by Ms. Bowman. Any, you have something, Ms. White?
No, I'll say it.
Okay, go ahead. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item, Ms. Harris.
Sure, 5.1 is going to be a review of the renewal of flood insurance, if Mr. Fernandez can present. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with us are our friends from Clemens Insurance Services, Richie Clemens and Timothy Clemens, uh, here to present the premiums for the renewals of our flood insurance policies. Uh, facilities are insured through the National Flood Insurance Program for the maximum available $500,000 building and contents, uh, with a couple of exceptions. Uh, and for the next 12-month period, we are renewing for, or we are requesting renewal for a premium of $181,618. That's about the same premium as maybe a $400 decrease from last year's premium. So, premiums have stayed, uh, stable, and we are recommending renewal of that when we be having to answer any questions.
Board, does anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion just to send this to the full board.
I'll second it.
All right. All right. So, motion by Kelly, I mean, motion by Ms. Lemoine, and seconded by Mr. Warner. Would everybody like to vote, please?
Do we vote? Y'all vote? Motion passes ten zero. Thank you.
Son, write the check. Write the check, Bernanda.
I tell you.
Well, now, till the next meeting.
I don't know how there was a slight decrease, must've.
Well, okay. Don't question Ms. Votche, we'll take it.
No, not, we, we didn't question it. We just go with it, yeah.
So, we have you in for a request to approve bid tabulations for the waste disposal services?
Uh, yes. Uh, we have, uh, put out a request for bids for collection and disposal of solid waste for the next two years, uh, and two optional renewal periods, and we are going to recommend, uh, IV waste. We had two companies respond. The low, the low quote came from IV waste, and, uh, we would like to recommend them for waste disposal for '23-24 with an option for two additional years. And, and the tabulation shows the bid results.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we go with the, the, uh, lower bid for IV waste for a two-year period?
Uh, it's one year with an option to renew for two additional years.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Warner, and seconded by Ms. Jackson. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
I just wanna ask Dave, do you remember what the amount was, uh, previous years?
Uh, it was slightly less. Uh, I don't remember the exact amount. I can have it next time.
If you can get that from me, I'll read it.
There was a slight increase in the, in the rates.
Thank you.
We have a motion, uh, 6.2, request to approve tabulations for our internal network wiring. Mr. Brown?
Good evening. We have put out our RFP for the internal wiring of our networks. We received one proposal back. Attached to the cover sheet, you will see the scoring done by the committee. Therefore, we are recommending that the only proposal be awarded to Benacom Technology.
Any questions from the board?
So, they were the only ones that actually reply back to our bid?
That's correct.
And that's for, um, the wiring for all of our schools?
That's correct. Except for, except for the two that were already done previously, and that would be Lacoste and Davies.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we go with the only bidder for the wiring, and that would be for vendors of Benacom.
Give me one second. Ms. Daisar, do you have a question or comment?
Yes. Um, Mr. Brown, um, I'm just curious why there was only one bidder. Um, was it that specific, or in the past, we've had other bidders, haven't we?
We have. It's really difficult to determine from our end why there would only be one bidder. There could be various reasons for that. Maybe the project is too big, because Chalmers High alone is a huge facility, and quite a lot of this is gonna be Chalmers High.
Okay. I was just wondering why we only had-
No, nothing's-
Possibly, we only had one bidder.
Nothing that stands out to me.
And I know this company's done work before, before, and I know they're, they're very good.
That's correct.
So, but I was just curious to that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Has the rates increased any bit from last year?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
Has the, the cost of it, has it increased from year over year?
This is the first time that we've put out for this, and this is a one-time deal for us. This will replace the current fiber structure with a newer fiber structure that's more up to standard. So, we haven't done this. This is not a reoccurring project.
Is this something that we could use E-rate funding for, or no?
This could have been used, we could have used E-rate funding for this, but with the five-year budget, there's a limited amount of dollars that you are able to pull from over a span of five years. Some of that money has already been used to, um, replace all of our switches in our school buildings, and the rest of that money is being set aside to replace the wireless network next year. So, we didn't have enough funds left in the E-rate budget, and we didn't wanna wait too much longer to accomplish this project.
Any more comments from the board? So, Sean made a motion, Ms. Jackson made a second. Please vote on your board phone, please.
Motion passes ten zero.
All right, my next one, uh, 6.3, request to approve bid tabulations for bread and bread products for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. Mr. Moreau?
Hello, good evening. Yes, I'm here to, uh, ask permission to accept the bid tabulation for bread and bread products for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Any questions or comments?
On this bid, it is all the lowest bid.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just curious, um, year over year, the increase?
No, not, uh, there wasn't much at, at bread. So, I've noticed in actually all three of these, we can talk about with the price inflation of food is starting to slow down tremendously, more than it was about a year ago. So, a year ago, it almost doubled. So, like, right after I got here. But, um, it's trending way, way down.
Good.
Any more comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board with the low bid for each item.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine, and a second from Ms. White. Please cast your vote on your board phone.
Motion passes ten zero.
All right, 6.4, request to approve, um, bid tabulations for milk and milk products for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024.
Yes, ma'am. So, this is also, um, seeing bid tabulation for milk and milk products through, uh, July 1st, 2023 through, uh, June 30th, 2024. Once again, that is the lowest bid. An only bid.
Any questions or comments from the board? Does anybody have a motion?
I'll move that we accept the lowest bid on each item.
Thank you, Ms. Daisar. Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lemoine, second. Please cast your votes, please.
Motion passes ten zero.
6.5, request to approve bid tabulations for the food products for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Yes, ma'am. So, this is all of our dry products, um, that we get, uh, because the bid, the bid period is July 1st through June 30th, 2024. And, um, this is, you can see it's all four companies that we do use. So, that is the lowest bid on every single line item.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Were there any exceptions?
No, Ms. Daisar.
No exceptions to the lowest bid?
No, everybody fit into the, uh, criteria that we need to follow through the Child Nutrition Program.
Thank you.
I just see some, some items only had one bidder, so we had to go with them as well.
Um, yeah, on some items, that, that company, for that one item, if they'll pick, pick and choose, you know, if they, like, let's say, salted butter, unsalted butter, if they only carry salted butter, they'll only bid just for that salted butter, not unsalted butter. And that, that's just an example I used off the top of my head.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board with the recommendation for the lowest bid.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. Ms. Jackson, second. Thank you so much. Please cast your votes, please.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Ms. Moreau.
Thank you.
So, 6.6, adoption of 2023 to 2024 at millages. Mr. David?
Thank you. Uh, in your packet, you have the resolution adopting our millages for tax year 2023. Uh, we have five millages. The first one, 3.91 mils, is a constitutional millage, which is, uh, set in the Louisiana Constitution. Uh, the others are renewable millages. We have three operational millages, which fund basically salaries, benefits of school operations, uh, school bus purchases, things of that nature. And the last, the 5.62 mils is our maintenance millage, which was passed, uh, several years ago by the public, which goes for renovations and operations and maintenance, maintenance of all our facilities. Uh, the millage rates that we're proposing are the same as last year. There's no increase in millage rates this year, and, uh, we are recommending that you adopt these millage, millages for the 2023 tax year.
Any questions or comments from the board? Can I have a motion?
Don't move it.
We have Ms. Jackson. Can I have a second? Ms. White, thank you so much. Please cast your votes.
I just have a, a quick question. Dave, when's our, when's our next millage, uh, come up for renewal?
Uh, the next millage up for renewal will be the maintenance millage. It runs through December 31st, 2026.
Twenty-six?
So, uh, that will be the last year. We can levy that millage. We wouldn't have to go for renewal before, for the next year, in order to levy it.
So, we'd have to put that on a, on a ballot in '25?
Uh, before the end of 2026. It would, it, we would have to renew it for tax year 2027. The other renewable millages will expire in 2028, so we would have to renew them before tax year 2029. So, there's a couple of years left on, on these millages, these renewable millages. The constitutional millage goes on forever.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments from the board? So, uh, Ms. Jackson, did you move?
I made a motion.
You made a motion, but did I- Did I, Ms. White, minute second, thank you so much. If you can, please cast your votes from the first.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Next item, superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, we have our graduation exercises coming up. The high school will be Thursday evening at 6:00, weather permitting, on the football field at Chalmitt High. We'll be watching it very closely, and if there are any changes to that, we will let people know as soon as possible. I know Mr. Warner and I, we're in direct contact with our connections at the web service and looking at it extremely closely. Next Friday will be the eighth grade ceremonies, and those are being done, as we did last year, at the Civic Center, where we'll have the three exercises all in the same day. At 9:00 a.m. will be St. Bernard Middle, at 11:00 Andrew Jackson, and then at 1:00 TRIST. So those eighth grade ceremonies will be Friday, pretty much all day. And then you'll, can check with kindergarten and fifth grade at each individual school, because we have some differences in, in times, depending upon the population at the school and how many and how they have to adjust. So parents can, will get that information from their schools, and it is, you know, on the website as well. And just realize the end-of-school activities, I know we have quite a few of them, and field trips that kids are taking now that hopefully, finally, leave testing is coming to a close. We had makeup yesterday and today, and hopefully that will be finished so all of us can breathe a sigh of relief, our students, our teachers, and our parents, because they have to talk with their students or their children about this. So I think the last day for students is the 23rd, so we've got maybe 10 days of school left, actual days, which this year seems to have just flown by. So please check your, the website and your schools for any end-of-year activities that you're interested in. Anyone else?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Votch. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I approve. We have two.
There's a motion, Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.